Good afternoon. My name is Jen Wallison and I'm a Menlo Park City Council member for District 3. Welcome to a spotlight on Menlo Park's housing element and affordable housing. I first want to start off by stating that the viewpoints being expressed in the observations in this video are mine alone and do not represent those of the Menlo Park City Council or the city of Menlo Park. Also, this was recorded on September 15th, 2001. The following slides were developed as accurately as possible as I could make them, and the information throughout the slides was gained through publicly accessible information. I want to point out that I'm not a housing expert and I've done my best to get the information right. There may be inadvertent errors and information may have changed by the time you watch this video. So if you catch something that doesn't look right, please let me know. My contact information will be at the end of this video. I also want to point out that this presentation includes a lot of assumptions, and I will do my best throughout the presentation to point those out. The presentation is illustrative only. It's meant to convey just the scale of the challenge facing Menlo Park when it comes to adding our housing, and also to show you how I'm thinking about this topic so that you can start to engage in your own mind on the challenges facing our community. I would like to help you access this information and get you thinking about these topics. There's going to be a public meeting on Thursday, September 23rd at 6:30 PM that the city is putting together, and I encourage everyone watching this to attend that meeting. The information about that meeting is available at menlopark.org/HE for Housing Elements. One of my values is making government as accessible as possible to everyone, and that engaged community is a stronger community. So I do hope you'll find this video informative and helpful in a way to have you think about the issue. I also hope you'll come away realizing that there's no one silver bullet solution to address our housing needs. I also don't have all the answers. I just understand that there's no easy choices and that whatever we end up with is going to involve a lot of trade-offs. So let's get started. So we're going to be covering quite a few slides today. I'm going to do my best to go through this quickly. So we're going to start. What is a housing element? So every city has something called a general plan, which is essentially the constitution of that city. And a chapter of the general plan is known as the housing element. The housing element outlines how the city will plan for and accommodate their housing needs for an eight-year cycle. So every eight years, every city in the state of California is required by law to update their housing element. We are finishing our fifth cycle of the housing element, which ran from 2015 and will go till 2023. And when you hear talk about the housing element right now, we are planning for cycle six, which runs from 2023 to 2031. I also want to define regional housing needs allocation or RENA. You're going to see that number of that acronym everywhere, and that basically is the target that our city and that each city is given of how many housing units we need to add. Now, how are these number of units determined? The state of California, through figuring out job growth and population growth, determines a number of housing units for each RENA cycle. They then give that those numbers to different collections of counties. So there's nine counties that make up the Bay Area, known as ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments. And ABAG received a number from the state of over 440,000 units for cycle six that they needed to add. Those nine counties then got together at the table and figured out how many numbers each city needed to add on their own. So the these little hexagons that you're seeing over here represent the different numbers that different cities had to reach. And here you can see Menlo Park at around 2,946 units is our allocation number. One thing you might notice in the numbers between fifth and sixth cycle is a huge jump. You know, eight years ago, there wasn't a lot of talk of a jobs housing imbalance or a housing crisis. Our state is in a huge deficit of housing being built, and so that's why the entire state has seen a huge increase in the number of units. Menlo Park in particular has quite a big number because of the number of jobs that we have in our our location and being a high opportunity area with great services and schools and amenities. I also want to point out that there's a buffer that we need to plan for. So while our RENA six number that we need to plan for is 2,946, we actually need to add 15 to 30% on that number to plan for. So how much growth are we talking about in cycle six? So Menlo Park currently has about 13,000 units of housing. That's apartments, houses, duplexes, all different types of housing. And as I mentioned, we need to plan for 2,946 without the buffer. So we're looking at about a 23% growth in our housing unit stock over the eight-year period. So we are looking at quite a bit of growth. So the housing element has some deliverables and constraints associated with it. Basically, at the end of the housing element, the city will come up with a map. The one you see on this slide is from cycle five of potential sites that are opportunity sites to add housing. It'll also have a spreadsheet of all those parcels and how many units each parcel is expected to develop. Then the city will also need to zone, change our requirements on how many units are allowed on each piece of land in order to make sure that those units will be built. There are many constraints. We can't just do and site and pick wherever we want to add housing. One of the biggest constraints is the site actually has to be likely to redevelop in the eight-year housing cycle. So for instance, I live in District 3, very close to the seminary. As many of you know, the seminary is quite a big piece of land, and I've heard people talk about this would be a great place for more housing. In fact, where I lived was once part of the seminary land. So we might be inclined to say, oh, that could add 400 units right there. The thing is, we actually have to verify that the Catholic Church, the owner of the land in this case, is interested and likely to redevelop that land in eight years. And if we cannot show that that is likely to happen, we cannot include that as as an opportunity site in our housing element. There are also different categories by income. So we don't just say we're going to add 3,000 units of housing. We actually have to show how we're going to meet those units of housing by different affordability categories. We're going to talk a lot about that. There's also rules around the size of the site, rules for reusing sites that were used in past housing elements. I've already touched upon the buffer of 15 to 30%. And then finally, there's something called affirmatively furthering fair housing, and we're going to talk about that. So affirmatively furthering fair housing comes from Assembly Bill 686, which was passed in 2018 and went into effect this year. And the law states that cities must explicitly address, combat, and relieve disparities resulting from past patterns of segregation to foster more inclusive communities. So those of you who are familiar with our city may not find the demographics that I've listed on this slide as shopping, but District 1 has a very different demographic makeup than the rest of the city. And we do have past patterns of discrimination and segregation in our city. So one of our mandates in cycle six is to zone for and cite housing in a way that addresses and combats that pattern. So you may be asking, this is a lot. I don't remember having to do this in the past, or maybe we did it, but not this seriously. So one of the other key components of cycle six, besides from having a much larger number, is the new compliance and enforcement arm. And that's part of AB 72, which was part of a 2017 housing package at the state level. And it created different penalties for cities that failed to produce a compliant housing element. Those range from fines, fees, and funding disqualifications, so state grants. Our city could have our local land use power taken away, or courts could decide how our housing is developed. We could even lose our rights to issue permits, including kitchen remodels and other permits. And we have already received a letter from housing advocates and different groups who sued Menlo Park in 2012, who are watching our city and how we operate through this process. And so at the bottom of the slide is an article from the Mercury News from 2012, showing how Menlo Park was sued in the past about 10 years ago for not producing enough housing. I also want to read a quote I heard somewhere that says, "If we fail to adopt a new substantially compliant housing element on schedule, that failure does not leave the status quo intact. Rather, the city forfeits its authority to rely on local zoning or the general plan as a basis for denying projects." So a lot of people see the housing element as kind of medicine. But if we don't do the housing element and we don't do it properly, there's even kind of worse medicine that awaits us. So as I mentioned, the focus of this presentation is about affordable housing. And I first just want to step back and say that a lot of people have an image in their head of affordable housing, by the way, which is also known as below market rate housing or VMR. But below market rate or affordable housing actually has very specific definitions, and it's based off of something called the area median income or AMI. And that's what it sounds like, the median income in our area. So for San Mateo County, our AMI for a four-person household is 149,600. So using that number and looking at percentages off that number, we come up with different categories, ranging from extremely low, so those that are 0 to 30% AMI, very low, low, and moderate, all the way up to above moderate, which is over 120 AMI, or what many of us think of as market rate. It's important to note kind of who falls in these categories, because again, it might not be what we grew up thinking about, low income or affordable housing. And also, I want to point out kind of the silver tsunami that's heading our way with the seniors and the baby boomers and a lot of seniors living on fixed incomes. But if you think of a minimum wage worker making $15 an hour, that's, you know, about $30,000 a year, and that's actually extremely low. That's 0 to 30% AMI. Or an essential worker like a medical assistant, that would probably be very low. Even our city employees, our gymnastics instructors, our water system operators that make about 40 to 50, 60 to 80, that might even be low. So I just want to put that out there that when we think of people who need housing in our communities, these are people that I think a lot of us want to be able to live in our communities. So as I mentioned, we have different income category brackets that we have to meet as part of our RENA, our allocation numbers. So at the bottom here, we have the 2,946 number that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. About 56% of that total RENA falls in the affordable housing categories. So those are people that are very low, that includes extremely low, low, and moderate incomes. So more than half of our housing requirements needs to be in those income categories. I also want to point out that I'm simplifying things in this presentation, and that very low and extremely low affordable categories are actually very different than low and moderate. A lot of times, very low and extremely low are folks that require wraparound services and that need extra attention. Whereas low and moderate income folks are some of the jobs that I mentioned and may do better in in conditions where they are mixed in with market rate folks. So for the purposes of this presentation, I'm simplifying and putting all affordable housing together, but looking at those different categories and how affordable housing relates to them is something that would be interesting to follow up on. So how are we going to meet our cycle six goals? So the biggest strategy to meet those numbers are to look at the last cycle and what were the sites that we didn't use, and also to look at pipeline projects, meaning what projects does the city know about that are going to be coming online during that period already? Before we do that, I want to take a moment to talk about inclusionary housing policy. So our city has what's called an inclusionary housing policy, where we require all housing developers to build a certain number of units in their market rate developments as below market rate units. So 15% of large developments are required to be affordable, and it has to be affordable at the low level. Remember all those different income categories. There are different, this is for developments that are 20 units or more. There's different requirements for developments that are 0 to 5, 5 to 10, and 10 to 20, but I'm not going to talk about those right now. I also want to point out that I've heard lots of members of the community ask, you know, why just 15? Why don't we just make developers include 20 or 25%? And we actually recently commissioned a study by BAE, I think it was, a feasibility to study to say, what would happen to development if we required higher inclusionary housing amounts? And it showed that for some high-density projects, and we're going to talk about density a little bit later, that perhaps 15, maybe 20% would be feasible. But for lower density, it would not be feasible. So we have to consider, we can't just say, oh, we want all these affordable units. If we ask for too much, then we get nothing. And you'll see why it's important that we get something when we get to how we're going to meet our our numbers. The illustration on the bottom is actually from last night's city council meeting. We had a project called Menlo Uptown. 483 total units in District 1. And because of our inclusionary policy, that developer was required to provide 67 low-income units. And they ended up going with an equivalent alternative, so kind of an averaging out of a combination of low-income units and then some moderate ones and some very low ones. And then this is a map of the development, and the orange is showing kind of how the inclusionary units fit into the larger picture of inclusionary housing. So I'm going to walk you through a bunch of math right now. But we actually have quite a bit of projects in the pipeline that can count towards cycle six. And this picture over here is showing that all of these projects actually add up to 3,192 total units. And that number might look really familiar to you because we were talking about we need 3,000 units, and here we're at over 3,000 units. But I want to point out a couple of things about that. One is that all of these are market rate projects, meaning these are not, you know, affordable projects. They do, most of these come with a 15% inclusionary policy, but that only yields, if we assume all of those are 15%, 479 affordable units. And the other thing is they're all in District 1, which when we talked about affirmatively furthering fair housing and undoing our patterns of discrimination and concentrating people of color and low-income people in one area of town can be problematic. I also want to point out a few things. Two of these projects were actually approved last night at city council. Four of these projects are what's called SB 330. And SB 330 is a state law that dictates some requirements of the city's ability to deny housing projects because of the housing crisis we're in. So those are projects that we are not really able to have much discretion over. It is possible that some of these projects could yield more than 15% through a development agreement. We could possibly go higher. But this is just, like I said, I was going to be building in a lot of assumptions. And so this is just a rough assumption of how many affordable units we can expect to get from our pipeline projects. I do want to point out that, as I mentioned, these are all in District 1, and that these would satisfy then about 29% of our total affordable housing needs. So if you look at having five districts and distributing our affordable housing kind of equitably among the five districts, that'd be 20% each. Again, rough assumption. I'm not saying we're going to do that. District 1 is already taking 29%. So when we look at adding more housing and affordable housing, we're probably going to be looking at places other than District 1 because of affirmatively furthering fair housing. Okay, so as I mentioned, we are going to need to look at adding affordable housing in districts other than District 1. So what this slide shows, first a map of our city districts. And it also shows those affordable numbers, those RENA numbers that I showed on an earlier slide, for very low, extremely low, low, and moderate, and adding up to the 1,662 or that 56% affordable share that we needed out of our RENA numbers. This is the 479, using that 15% inclusionary that we calculated we're going to get in District 1. So that leaves 1,883 affordable units that we're going to need to add over this eight-year cycle in districts 2 through 5. And again, I want to point out that the buffer is 15 to 30%. So this is a little back-of-the-envelope math, just to give you a sense of what it would take to get that 1,183 affordable units if we're using the inclusionary policy as our main strategy to get affordable housing. It would take, according to this very complicated math, 7,887 additional units of housing in districts 2 through 5, so about 8,000 units of housing, only using that inclusionary strategy. And just to remind you, we currently have in all of Menlo Park about 13,000 housing units. So this strategy alone is not going to do it for us. You can only imagine what it would look like. Huge tall buildings everywhere, huge impacts to our schools. Everything would just be impacted. So I don't think this is a likely scenario. I just wanted to present it to you so you understood the scale and the magnitude of what we're talking about. So we're now going to take a moment to talk about density. So residential density is defined by units per acre. And so we're going to look at four different densities, just to get an idea of what type and mass and scale of buildings we're talking about. So the first is units per acre of 25.5. And to give you a picture of an example of something about density in our community, the middle plaza, the Stanford project at 500 El Camino at Middle, that is being built at 25 units an acre, the residential part. There's also a picture here of another picture of a density of about 25 units an acre. Usually, it's kind of like townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. Then we're at 40 units an acre. These are also kind of townhomes, maybe three to four stories. The SRI Parkland project is proposing, their initial proposal is 40 units an acre, to give you an idea. Another type of density would be 60 units an acre. This is the maximum density that we currently allow in our downtown El Camino area per our downtown specific plan. The picture here showing 60 an acre actually has two floors of parking and then about five stories of units. So if the parking were underground, you would have five stories of housing at 60 units an acre. And then out in the bayfront in District 1, we allow up to 100 units an acre. And these are more like seven, eight-story buildings. Last night, we just approved Gray Stars Menlo Uptown, which is 100 units an acre. So this is just to give you an idea, excuse me, of what different densities are like. I do want to point out that long ago, we used to allow some of these taller densities, more dense buildings in our downtown area. For example, at Valparaiso and University Avenue, I believe there is like a nine-story residential building. And some of you might be familiar with a building in Palo Alto, right at San Piscato Creek, near the train station on Alma, which is also quite tall. So some communities have these types of buildings. So now I want to walk through an example of what if we built, what if there was an eight-acre site and a developer who was keen to redevelop that site? And to give you a sense of what eight acres looks like, the project on Oak Grove in El Camino, formerly known as Greenheart, but now Springline, that is 6.4 acres. And the middle plaza project that I was just referencing before is 8.4 acres. So eight acres is a pretty significant site. So now let's look at how many affordable units we could expect to yield with our 15% inclusionary policy at different density levels. So again, let's just imagine for a moment that there's an eight-acre site in the city of Menlo Park that's ready to develop. And let's say we're going to use the density of 25.5 units an acre, so about what the Stanford project is being built at. That's about 204 units. So I took the density and multiplied it by the number of acres, and then multiplied that by 15%. So that got me 31 units. So again, if our target, our RENA number for affordable units is 1,183, an eight-acre site at the density of 25.5 units an acre would only get us about 1.5% of our affordable housing RENA. And then I've also done the math for the different density levels of 40, 60, and 100. And you can see even at the 100 units an acre of eight acres, we'd be getting 800 units and only yielding 120. That would be affordable or 10%. So to give you an idea of how many of these scale projects it would take to meet that 1,183 target, we'd be looking at anywhere, if we were at the highest density, of like 10 sizes, 10 of those size projects, all the way up to 66 projects at this lower density. Again, this is not what I'm suggesting is going to happen in our city. Also, with the development agreements and possibly increasing our inclusionary housing amount, this could yield more. But I just wanted to give you context on the scope and scale of the challenge ahead of us. So we've been talking a lot about affordable, about inclusionary policies as a strategy to reach our affordable units. But there's also other strategies as well. There's using kind of standalone affordable. So instead of only having part of a market rate development have some affordable units, what if the entire development was completely affordable? And in San Mateo County, according to the Housing Leadership Council, approximately 65% of all affordable homes are built on parcels owned by public agencies. And so these can be, you know, cities, school districts. The Ravenswood School District has expressed an interest in redeveloping their Flood School in District 2. This could be Caltrans, Caltrain, or in other areas like a BART site, all different kinds of public agency land that could be redeveloped. In San Mateo and Mountain View, they're redeveloping their downtown parking lots into 100% affordable buildings that are all affordable. And so those are possibilities. In addition, religious facilities now have a new state law, AB 1581, where they can use up to half of their parking lot and be able to redevelop those. And so an example is St. Bees on Sand Hole Road has come forward in some of the meetings, expressing an interest and a willingness to develop on their land if it's feasible and possible. But the scale that they're talking about is about 10 to 20 units, and that was mentioned in a recent community meeting. So the big question that I want to leave you with today is how will Menlo Park meet our RENA, our number requirement of the 1,183 affordable units, especially those very low income units requirements in districts 2 through 5? So outside of District 1, because as we showed, District 1 is already pulling a very large part of those affordable housing units, and we need to affirmatively further fair housing. That's part of our state requirement. So as I mentioned at the beginning, I don't have the answer. These are the suite of strategies that the city is looking at. We talked a little bit about El Camino, maybe some opportunity sites there downtown, looking at other commercial sites. We talked about religious facilities, fifth cycle and pipeline projects. It's also possible that we can count accessory dwelling units as part of our affordable housing stock. And right now, it looks like we're going to be able to count maybe anywhere from 85 to 376 ADUs, granny units as part of our housing element number. Now, not all of those will be qualifying as affordable, but could be a very Now, not all of those will be qualifying as affordable, but could be a very large amount. But again, looking at the one thousand one hundred and eighty three and how far that one strategy will get us. Um, we also may be looking at opportunities in single family areas. For those of you following state legislation, um S B nine and S B ten have passed the legislature and are heading to the governor's desk, and we'll see what happens with those. But they may open up um opportunities in single family neighborhoods. Um, so basically, there are going to be a lot of different strategies that are going to be explored. And we're going to need the community, your help, in helping to weigh off the benefits and trade offs of the different strategies and and what will work best for Menlo Park to meet our needs. So finally, um it's not if we're going to make these plans to add this housing. Um, it's a state requirement. It's how and where we're going to add this housing. Um, I do believe we need all this housing at different income levels throughout the city. No one um neighborhood or district should receive the brunt of all of this development. Um, it's important right now, as we are still having these conversations, to keep all of our options on the table. And this is ultimately a issue of geometry and economics. How are we going to fit the units required on the amount of land that we have as opportunities? And how will we make this um desirable for developers? Um, because it's developers that build housing, um it's not the city. We enable it to be built. So this is a um huge challenge. Um, change is coming. Change is hard. Um, but with change comes opportunity. So I hope you'll join in these conversations and really think about the type of community that um we want to live in, uh not just for today, but in the future. Um, and with that, I have all of my sources here, and I'll be including a link to how to access uh this presentation, so you can click on these links. And finally, I'll leave you with um ways to stay informed and stay engaged. And the city does have a website about the housing element, Menlo Park. Oh, let's just say MenloPark.org slash housing element. I apologize for the typo. You can sign up there to get notifications. There is the upcoming meeting I referenced on September twenty third at six thirty P M. The Zoom link will be at the housing uh element website on the city uh website. I very much encourage you to attend and participate and to bring your questions. There will also be a joint Housing Commission and Planning Commission meeting in early October. And the city council will be taking up these issues in late October. So please follow along and participate. I will also be keeping residents and stakeholders updated uh via my mailing list and my newsletter. And you can find a way to sign up for that on my website at JenWallison.com. So thank you very much for joining me on this journey. Um, I hope that we can come together as a community and um make this an even more wonderful place for all of us to live. Thank you so much and have a great day.